Pete, I'd like to declare this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome each of you to the February the 3rd meeting of the Irelde County Board of Commissioners. Our colors this evening will be presented by members of the Boy Scout Troop Number 609, sponsored by the First ARP Church here in Statesville, and they're under the leadership of Jim Mixon and Jay Winkle. Members of the Color Guard are Zach Winkle and Michael Myers. The pledge to the flag will be presented by Andy Beal and other members of the troop that are here with us tonight, Liam Marcy, Brian Nellis, Jay Mixon, Austin Sharp, Cody Riddick, Ross Robertson, Ben Wall, Hunter Jackson, Matthew Jones, Caleb Campbell, and Nicholas Holt. Now if you please stand for the President and the colors.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise to the seat for the presentation of the rose to be followed by the closing. Cast salute.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Glenn Usry, pastor of the Christian Outreach of Piedmont, Statesville, North Carolina, will give the invocation.
Mr. Chairman, no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries five, zero. Appointments for the board. This time, we have a proclamation that we would like to present to the scouts. Mr. Robertson, would you present this? Would be Mr. Robertson, you move, have you? We'd like to ask Tim Maxson and, let's see, who else is coming up? Jay?
Bob.
And Bob Palms.
Got a proclamation to read to you, and it's from Irelde County, North Carolina, the Irelde County Board of Commissioners. It's a proclamation for Boy Scouts of America Anniversary Week, February 8th through 14th, 2009. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America organization has been instilling timeless values in our youth since its founding on February 8, 1910, with the mission of serving others through its values-based program, and whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, the Boy Scouts of America has helped over 100 million youth strive for the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and patriotism, and whereas the Piedmont Council of the Boy Scouts of America and its many Cub Scout packs, Boy Scout troops, venturing crews, and explorers post are celebrating 99 years of service, and whereas numerous community organizations in Irelde County, North Carolina, make scouting programs available to the youth of Irelde County as a means of character building, citizenship training, leadership preparation, and personal fitness development, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America organization provides countless hours of community service to Irelde County through initiatives such as scouting for food, conservation projects, and the Good Turn for America program. Now therefore, the Irelde County Board of Commissioners proclaims February 8th through the 14th, 2009, as Boy Scouts of America Anniversary Week, and urges our citizens to express appreciation to the community organizations and dedicated scout leaders for bringing this values-based program to our young people. This, the third day of February 2009, signed the Irelde County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. I'm Bob Palms. I am Gemstone District Committee Chairman, which encompasses Irelde County. I would just like to say that the rich history in this county has only been made possible by the leaders of this county and the citizens of this county. I have been district chairman for five years. I've seen a huge, huge impact on our youth in going into the times that we're going into now, and we are in, and let's face it, they're hard. We have been constantly supported by our county leadership and our city leadership, both in Mooresville, all the cities here in Irelde County, and I would just like to thank you and continue to support scouting. There's very few things out there in this world we've gotten really busy, but as far as instilling the values that scouting portrays into these children and these young men as they grow is invaluable, and we cannot afford to lose that. And I will tell you that in the state of North Carolina, the Gemstone District is one of the very top, very top districts. I'm not real sure on my numbers here, but I think we just produce more Eagle Scouts than anybody in the state, if I'm not mistaken, and I think our district this year has produced more Eagle Scouts, which, keep in mind, of all the scouts in the United States, only 3.8% attain Eagle. So the Gemstone District has done an incredible job, and it's only due to the support of this county. Thank you. I'd like to turn it to Jim Mixon, who is our district commissioner for the Gemstone.
I also want to say thank you to everyone. Gemstone District is one of the 11 districts of the Piedmont Council, which services western North Carolina. We're now the largest district, and that's not by landmass, that's by number of registered scouts and adult leaders. We have earned the quality district awards for the last two years by VSA's national standards. We have exceptional group of adult leaders here in Irelde County, dedicated Cub Scout leaders, dedicated Boy Scout leaders, just a wonderful group of adults, the best group of adults I can name, or Cub Scout and Boy Scout leaders here in Irelde County. We also have a great group of young men. I'm especially proud of this group that sits in front of us tonight, Troop 609, my troop, the best troop in Irelde County. We enjoy our rivalries, but it's all good fun because we all belong to a great organization. Again, I'd just like to thank everyone, like to thank the county commissioners and all the citizens of Irelde County for their support.
Well said. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all's service that you do. Thank you.
Ms. Amy Isley.
This guy right here is an integral part of what keeps things going behind the scenes, and he's not going anywhere.
Ms. Amy Isley, Executive Director of Stop the Children Abuse Now, SCAN, would like to make a presentation.
I came tonight because I wanted, well, I was thinking I was going to give you some good news, but the newspaper beat me to it. We have a new office behind you guys on Walnut Street, which is a little bit larger so that we can expand some of our programs a little bit. We do a lot, as you know, with child abuse prevention, and this year, because of your support, we have been able to touch the lives of over 1,000 people in one way or another through our programs, and I just wanted to tell you thank you so much because, you know, a lot of people don't understand the need for not only monetary support, but the support of each of you behind what we do in general, in our mission, in trying to keep our children in this community safe. It makes a difference, it keeps my staff and our volunteers going. I do appreciate it, and I did want to also tell you that, I'm not sure you're aware, that the funding that you give to DSS, none of that comes to us. We are completely separate from them, and yet we work with a lot of their families. Thank goodness, we enjoy it. We have been able to see a lot that you have not been able to see because we have been able to see either parents growing and learning how to be parents in the right way, or we've been in there to say, this isn't working, we need to do something different to keep the children safe. It happens because of your support and the support of others, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isley, and we appreciate what you do. I know it's a very needed organization. A lot of the leaders of this community support SCAN, and we just hope you can continue to do the service you've always given to us. Thank you very much for coming. This time, I'd like to recognize Reverend Glenn Usry for his presentation.
Thank you very much for this opportunity just to share just a little bit about the Police Athletic League, and I'd like to kind of go kind of through the back door to kind of present what we actually do in Irelde County. When I came to North Carolina, I came here actually for educational purposes, to get education in ministry. I'd already began to pursue ministry in Hempstead, New York. When I was in Hempstead, I actually was a young man not even thinking about ministry. What actually happened was, I was in a home where my father was an alcoholic, my brother was actually selling crack out of the bottom of our house, and I found out the hard way that there has to be a real frontline attack on changing mentality and changing mannerisms that create an atmosphere of drug pushing and drug trafficking. I was a victim of seeing that firsthand. When I came to school, I thought I was going to go back to New York, and I heard about a place called Statesville that kind of reminded me of my hometown. Had small town, but had a lot of big problems, big city problems, and I decided, instead of going back to New York to start a church, which we may have heard of, Christian Outreach, we decided after getting offered some property on the other side of town, a very nice neighborhood, to actually go to the center of the problem, which was South Statesville. Purchased about 15 acres of property there, and since that time, have kind of been incubated for several programs that members of our church have embraced and have given to the community. Priority House, which is a men's home for men that are recovering from drug addiction. House of Virtue for women that are going through the same situation. Success Institute Charter School, started by some members of our church and now has been given to the community as well. It's now a school that serves K to 12 for young people that have an alternative to the regular Irelde-Statesville school system, but we do partner with Irelde-Statesville schools here in Irelde County. And we also have started because of our outreach through athletics and academic tutorials, something called the Police Athletic League a couple of years ago. Everything that we start, we usually start it from the church as incubator, and then we give it to the community, and the community creates boards basically so it can stand alone autonomously. And the Police Athletic League is no stranger to that. All of our boards, they run after a while separate from the church, and the community members basically begin to run those organizations. Police Athletic League, I've given you a handout on it, so I won't talk a lot about it. It's a national program all across the United States of America. They utilize such things as the GREAT Program and other programs that show kids that police officers are not against the youth that are in the street that are involved in a lot of the crimes, but there are a lot of police officers that are involved and want to help these young people to see another route in life. And so, the man that's actually the director of the police, the president of the Police Athletic League here in Irelde County is Officer Robert Mountain. He's a federal officer in Winston-Salem, but he actually resides in Irelde County, and he basically is somewhat hands-on with the kids. He takes kids on fishing trips as well, as trips to the federal court to show them what they actually could be facing at an early age to try to deter them from drug trafficking, drug pushing, or just being involved in the drug lifestyle. So recently, because of our efforts over the last couple of years, the Governor's Crime Commission has awarded us a grant for next two years, an amount close to about $81,000, with the possibility of expansion if we continue to do a good job. We're serving approximately about 200 kids per week so far, and primarily, we look to partner with all the different organizations that work with kids. We do take referrals, and we get them quite often, and we're just excited about just sharing with the county commissioners and Irelde County citizens that we are here to help, we want to help to make Irelde a safe place, you know, to live. So we really appreciate you allowing us just to share tonight.
We have a presentation for you tonight, and to add on to what Reverend Usry is talking about, they have an amazing story to tell for South Statesville. I've known him for several years now. First got acquainted with him through the Christian Outreach Church and actually attended a service there and had a great time. It's, I don't know how large the congregation is, but during the week, his church is a basketball court, and then on Sundays, it comes alive with bands and a lot of people from all over the community, of all races. And his church has set forth a lot of these different programs and have asked no public money. The Powell Organization, the Police Athletic League, was started by his Sunday School, and at this point, they have grown to where they have actually got some grant money to take over some of the expenses, but if I'm not mistaken, there's no salaries taken out of this money, is that correct?
No, there's contracts that will be, we are hiring people, and they'll be in the newspaper for those that would like to acquire more positions.
So now their church will go on to other outreach ministries, and the school in itself, the Success Institute, serves those kids who, in traditional schools, were just considered to be, no way you could help them, and they have a tremendous success ratio there of kids who graduate from the school, and when a lot of the traditional schools didn't want to handle it, didn't want to work with them. So in addition to that, when he runs all these different organizations, he also is a co-author of two books, and promised to autograph me a copy. But anyway, I think Irelde County should be very proud to have someone like this working within our county. And this time, Irelde County takes pleasure in honoring Reverend Glenn Usry, distinguished citizen, for rendering dedicated, loyal, and useful civic service to this county. February 3rd, 2009, county commissioners of Irelde County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith, would you like to present the ordinance?
I can only hope for applause when I'm done. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Tonight, we have a request from Darlene Payne, who is not here with us, but the request originated with Ms. Payne, but we have kind of taken it over from the departmental level. The request is to add language to our zoning ordinance that deals with, to deal with electric or electronic changeable copy billboards. These are the electronic billboards that you see on some of the highways, especially going down to Charlotte, look like giant big screen TVs. We currently regulate static, what we're calling static billboards, and we've made several changes or proposed changes to the ordinance because of the different nature that the electronic billboards bring. And I'm going to go through the changes. If you have any questions about anything that's already in the ordinance, I'd be glad to answer those as well, but I'm going to hit the points that we have added for the ordinance amendment. When dealing with these billboards, we wanted to regulate the luminescence, so we have put limits on the level that they can go as far as, they're called nits, and it's a way to measure that. 7,500 is the maximum that a sign can be illuminated. This is during the day. However, after dusk, it goes down to 500 nits, and I've looked to see what another comparable would be on that, and a large, or an LCD TV, or a large flat-screen TV is generally about 450 nits, so that gives you some perspective on that. Because of the nature of these billboards, instead of having them one after another on the highways, we're proposing that they go from what's now allowed at 1,000 feet of separation between two static billboards to 2,000 feet of separation between a static billboard and an electronic copy. And so what that's going to do is, that's going to limit the stair stepping and stacking that could take place if we were to go with the old regulations. These would only be allowed on Interstate 77, Interstate 40, and US 64. It's all of the limited access highways that we have in the county and that are federal highways. Again, this is something that we're trying to take the larger, brighter signs out of neighborhoods and residential areas for the most part. We've added several special requirements into the ordinance that we will go through every time we go through an application for one of these signs. We're going to pay more attention to DOT standards upfront and require that DOT says yes, you can put a sign in this location at the forefront of the process rather than waiting until we're done with our permitting and then potentially not being able to locate the sign there. That, by the way, would apply to static boards as well. There will be no fluttering, moving, animated copy that would be on these signs. Once a message is up, it is up for 10 seconds at least, and then it goes to another one. So they will change on 10-second intervals, and to make sure that the change is quick, we put a limit of two seconds on the change, but generally speaking, they're going to be instantaneous. So once one's up, once that message changes, then another one will come. There will only be one message at a time, so you can't split it up and have, you know, two things going at one time, or two messages going at one time, and then go to another one. That will have the same effect, and essentially gets you four instead of two. And basically, we want, the intent, the overall intent, again, of what we wanted to do was to try to limit the number of these signs because we feel there is a bigger impact. We had a couple of meetings with our planning board, as well as a subcommittee, and we really tried to hash out all of the details that we could, and I think that we've come up with a pretty strong ordinance, and as you can see from the table that I've included in your packet, compares pretty favorably with some of the areas or some of the other cities and counties in the region. So the planning board gave a recommendation in favor by a vote of six to two, and the staff is in favor of this as well, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Comments? Mr. Smith, we had this discussion earlier, I'd just like you to matter of the record. I expressed to you my concern about some of the things, when you leave this community and you go on the interstate, and some of the advertising you see on these signs, it was, to me, I think, inappropriate for someone to drive down the road with their children in the car and have to endure that, but I know that you're confined by what the statute will allow, but you've done it privately, I'm not going to work on you too much, but I'd just like a public commitment from you that you will be as stringent as far as you feel comfortable that would be defensively legally as far as what you would limit on these signs in terms of decency. I know that you can't outlaw some of these things, even though you personally may find them objectionable, and I've read the statute, and I agree with you, it is somewhat subjective, but I'd just like for you to be as tough on that kind of thing as you could. We will, we will.
I have one question. Some communities mandate that these signs be turned off, like from 11:00 to 5:00 a.m. or 11:00 p.m. to 6:00. Why did y'all not recommend that? Well, we felt that by going down to, going down to the lower level would not, and as high as some of these signs would be, that it wouldn't have a detrimental impact when, you know, 100 or more feet from residential. Just a judgment call on our part.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I now declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak either for or against this ordinance, please come to the microphone at this time, state your name. Seeing there's no one, I declare this public hearing closed. At this time, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the proposed ordinance under permitted location, Section Two. Instead of the minimum distance being only a hundred feet between these big signs that are going to be flashing on and off at night, instead of that being one hundred feet, I would like to suggest that we change it to four hundred feet, as some other communities have done.
Mr. Chairman, I speak in favor of his motion.
Is this motion, this motion is to amend the ordinance and pass it as with amendment? Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. Motion is to amend this ordinance and pass with Mr. Robertson's amendment. Any other discussion?
Are we voting on the amendment? Or is this a motion?
I asked if it was amended motion. If you'd like me to split it up, I will. Do you want to add another amendment?
I have no other amendment. I just think that, well...
Okay.
If you want to...
This is a vote on the ordinance as proposed by Mr. Robertson.
As amended.
I want to make sure I understand that we can vote on the amendment separately, or we can vote on the ordinance with his amendment. I just want to make sure which one we're doing.
Point of order. No, we couldn't do that. He proposed an ordinance.
All I'm asking is what the motion was. Mr. Robertson, I'll go to directly you. Was your motion to approve the ordinance with the amendment?
With the amendment, sure.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I have a problem with four hundred foot set back. I think that if you put that large a setback on the property, I think you can run into a situation where you're going to render too much of someone's property useless to them. And they're in that place that I find highly objectionable where they face the potential paying property tax on that property for as long as they're on earth here with little or no use of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign?
No.
No.
Motion carries three to two. I believe the next several items are on consent agenda. Mr. Mashman, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the following matters are, under administration, are on consent agenda. Basically, Item A, you, in the agenda briefing, you received a report on the unpaid taxes from the tax collector, and you gave him permission to advertise the tax liens on Wednesday, March the 18th, 2009, if you approve this action. Item B is you authorize the staff to proceed with petitions to include two areas of Ardell County into the East Alexander Volunteer Fire Department area. Those areas are in the Riverwalk area and also, I'll refer to it as the Bullock Road area. Currently, the Riverwalk area is considered no man's land because it's not actually covered by any department. The Bullock Road area is in the West Ardell Fire District, but including them with this would put them closer to a fire department and would allow for a lower rate in that particular area. So you basically are authorizing them to proceed with petition process. Item C is approval for the library to apply for a telecommunications services discount grant under the Federal Communications Commission E-Rate Program. Item D is approval of a request from the library to apply to the state library of North Carolina for a basic equipment grant under the Library Services and Technology Act. And this equipment will be used in the new Troutman Library, which, by the way, they did have groundbreaking today on that library. It was a good turnout, but extremely cold. Item E is to approve a consultant agreement with the firm of Robert S. Siegel, CPA, Professional Associates, to work with, trying to identify some revenue enhancements and reductions in cost for the county. We've had an ongoing agreement for several years with this firm and, as a result, have been able to identify many areas where we can, have been able to increase our revenue or reduce our cost. Approval of the revised shared leave policy with an amendment that was made in the agenda briefing that would allow for a broader definition of immediate family based on a presentation or justification to the Board of County Commissioners and approval by the board. And then Item G is approval of the January 20, 2009 minutes. Mr. Chair, those are the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. The motion, we approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made, we approve this, the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements of vacancies occurring on the boards and commissions. One announcement for the Animal Agreements Committee. One announcement, announcement for the I-Care Board of Directors. As for appointments to the boards and commissions, we have five appointments to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, here none. I make a motion, we table these appointments.
Okay, motion's been made, we table these appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Criminal Justice Partnership Program, we've got one appointment. There's one at-large position available.
Motion table, Chair.
Motion's been made to table this nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Purchase of Development Rights Committee, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Charles Carter.
Mr. Charles Carter has been nominated. Are there other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the Florida nominations and appoint Mr. Carter by acclamation.
Motion's been made, we appoint Mr. Carter by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Statesville Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made, we table this nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Nurse and Home Advisory Committee, two appointments. Here none, I move we table this nomination to a further date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. New business.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item that's of concern to me, and I've spoken with some of other members of the board, and I think this is one time when we need to stand up and speak up for the well-being of our staff. There's a bill that's been introduced in the legislature, and Mr. Mashman, you may correct me on the House bill number, but I believe it's House Bill Number Five, and that's the one concerning euthanasia and doing away with the gas chambers and animal control shelters across the state.
I cannot confirm the exact number, but there has been a bill that's introduced that would do that.
I know that there's a lot of motion attached to this issue. We've all heard some of it. I do know that the people who support the banning of the gas chambers and animal control shelters are well-intentioned people. It is not my intent to call into question their character, however, I do disagree with their judgment regarding this matter. It is not my intention to inflict unnecessary pain or suffering upon the animals that someone has chosen not to be responsible for, and they're left with the county to deal with. But I do not think it is in the best interest of our staff to have to euthanize these animals by lethal injection. That may be an uneventful process in the majority of the cases, but I have made trips, more than one, to the animal shelter at a time when they were having to euthanize animals. And some of these animals, quite frankly, are wild animals. And some of these animals are just darn right mean. And I just do not feel that if we're to be responsible in regard to the well-being of our staff, that we should subject to these people to have to physically handle these animals and be in close proximity to them and get them a sedative and put them to sleep and then give them lethal injection. I think it exposes our staff too much to the potential of personal injury, and I think that we should, if the chairman would be willing to do so, I think on behalf of this board, you should write a letter to our legislative delegation and inform them of this board's opposition to this bill.
Okay. Would you like to make that into motion?
I'd like to offer that as a motion, yes.
Okay. Heard the motion is, any discussion? Motion's been made that we like, write a letter to our delegation in the General Assembly expressing our opposition to the bill, which I'm not sure what the bill is, concerning euthanasia of animals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries five zero. Any other new business? County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. One of the things I would like to do is just draw to your attention a project that's been going on for a couple of years. I think all of you are aware that Ardell County is blessed to have a lot of veterans in the county, and I think we have one of the more responsive and active Veterans Service Office of any of the counties that I'm familiar with. And something that has been occurring, though, is that there has been quite an accumulation of paper over the years as we've tried, as we have been serving the veterans of this county. And a couple of years ago, the county commissioners authorized us to change over from a paper format to a digital format for our records. This allowed us, for one thing, to free up a lot of space that we needed desperately. And the other thing is it would make records readily available in a digital format so that we could serve as the veteran, serve the veteran whether we were in Mooresville or Statesville as it was. If we happened to be in Mooresville and we had your record there, we could serve you. But if your record happened to be in Statesville, then we'd have to make another appointment and vice versa, and that occurred quite a bit. So we, with the commissioner's approval, we did start the transition over to a digital format and went with a company called One Source Document Solutions. And the Board of Commissioners approved $27,625 to scan the documents and to make this transition. In order to try to keep that as low as possible, the two employees that we have in the Veterans Service Office began the process of preparing the files for scanning and actually went beyond that and made all of the documents ready for scanning. And by doing what they did, we were able to cut the cost from $27,625 to $12,124. Now, I recognize that in a budget that is as large as the one that we do have, that that maybe isn't a significant amount, but the action that it shows is significant and that it shows that by dedication and striving to do all that we can, we were able to save the county some money in this respect. And I say that to say that I think you can anticipate the same kind of effort as we're confronting the issues that are before us now. The only other, and I do congratulate those two employees for, Miller Wright and Brad Strout, for their efforts in that department. And also would like to just call your attention to the draft agenda for the commissioner's winter planning conference to be held on February the 27th and the 28th at the Agriculture Resource Center. And ask if you have any items that you would like to add or modify any of the agenda items that have been presented. Again, this is scheduled for all day on Friday, the 27th, and a half a day on Saturday, the 28th of February.
Mr. Mashman, what you just described was the Toyota method of lean manufacturing, the relentless pursuit to drive out waste and improve efficiencies at every level of the organization. No need to apologize for it being a small step. Those small steps taken across an organization as large as ours is extremely important, and moreover, that attitude across the organization is important to have. So I'm thrilled. It's, it may be a small victory, but it's still a victory. Drive on, let's do more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. I now move that we go into closed session to discuss personnel matters under GS 143-318, 11A6. All in favor, say aye.
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 We started playing a CD.
Oh, of course, the entertainment.
Yeah, and it also goes out over the air.
Can you imagine what life in North Carolina would be like if there were no county governments? Probably not. Because if you're like most people, you find it difficult to describe what your county government does for its citizens. The fact is, every time you go to a public school, or take a walk in a county park, or check out a book from the county library, or even eat in a restaurant, your county is working to provide programs and services that enhance our quality of life, protect us, and prepare us for the future. Counties create opportunity for coming generations by building and maintaining our public school facilities. Besides the money spent for buildings and grounds, counties put more than $2 billion each year into North Carolina's public school system. These funds are used to provide salary supplements to attract and retain top caliber teachers and hire additional classroom personnel to provide a better educational opportunity for our children. Counties enrich our lives by providing libraries that offer more than just books to read. Public libraries offer access to computers and the Internet, educational programs for young children, as well as cultural activities, movie screenings, and community events. The great outdoors wouldn't be quite so great if it weren't for county efforts to protect farmland, preserve open space, and create and maintain parks and recreation facilities. County governments care for our environment in other ways, too. On average, each North Carolinian generates 5.6 pounds of trash per day, creating 350 million tons of trash a week. Counties operate landfills to safely dispose of our waste so that it doesn't cause environmental problems, while recycling programs help reduce waste in landfills. Counties are also taking on an increasing role in providing clean water and wastewater treatment services to meet the needs of our growing population. County parks and recreation programs have something for absolutely everyone, from toddlers to seniors, sewing to swimming, nature classes to cooking classes, as well as athletic leagues and summer camps. A county government's responsibilities are not all fun and games. Counties also ensure our well-being so that we live in communities that are safe and secure. County sheriffs protect and preserve the peace, and counties also provide emergency medical response services and fund volunteer fire departments to watch over our health and safety. Many of the ways counties protect our citizens are harder to see, but they are no less vital and important. When you walk into a building or home, county inspectors have verified that the building meets safety codes. When you walk into a restaurant, you know what you're getting because county inspectors give sanitation grades to restaurants to reduce unsanitary practices and foodborne diseases. Health departments supply flu shots and other medical services for needy citizens, help control communicable diseases, and make available health education resources. These and other services are becoming even more necessary. By the year 2030, North Carolina is projected to grow from nine million to 12 million people. The Census Bureau estimates we will be the seventh-largest state in the nation. To accommodate this growth, counties will have to build at least 500 new schools in the next 20 years, or one new school every two weeks. Our growing population will tax our water supply and other natural resources, so county governments are already planning for tomorrow and taking the necessary steps to meet the challenges we will all face. All told, it's a pretty full day of work for your county government, every day, but it doesn't stop there. County government, enhancing the quality of our lives and protecting our well-being today while improving the future for all of North Carolina.
So moved.
Any motions made resume open session? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any motions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion as far as approval of agreement for the continuation of the employment of Mr. Joel Mashburn as our county manager. We all have that agreement in front of us and I'd make a motion for its approval.
Motion's been made. We approve this employment agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Is there other motions?
Mr. Chairman, after consideration of merit pay for the sheriff, the registered deeds and the county manager, I make the motion that we grant all three merit increase of four percent.
Y'all heard the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. It's any other business. The motion we adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.